We'll call to order the meeting of February 27th of the Planning Commission of the Town of Los Catos. We have a roll call, please staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Seauk?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner Bourgeois?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Chair Erickson?
Here.
Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Bourgeois in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is required of the United States of America and to be required for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move fully into our agenda tonight, we'd like to be sure that the public understands where the Commission of the Town is with participation. The Town of Los Catos strongly urges the participation of the public in the process. It's a cornerstone of democracy. Probably this mic isn't working. It wasn't working. It's a cornerstone of democracy and also very important for the Planning Commission in terms of its ability to complete its work on behalf of the Town Council and the citizens of the town. There are three different ways for the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Members of the public are always welcome to provide written comments prior to the meeting and they become part of the staff packet and occasionally become desk items that we have. It's also at the meetings of the Planning Commission, two opportunities in general for the public to participate, what we call verbal communications, which is an opportunity for the public to speak on any topic that's not on the agenda of the Commission for that evening and also to speak on any agendized item in the public portion of the public hearing for that particular item. If you want to do either of the two latter at the meeting tonight, we would ask that you fill out one of the speaker cards that are on the back of the benches in the audience and hand it to the recording clerk to the left so that we can recognize you at the appropriate time as we move forward. And we are very excited to have you here tonight and would encourage your participation as we move through the meeting tonight. There are minutes from the February 13th meeting of the Commission that were distributed in the packet. Are there comments on the minutes, changes in the minutes, or a motion to adopt the minutes? Commissioner Seauk?
Just to comment, while I was not at the meeting, I did watch the proceedings on tape and feel that I can vote on its accuracy.
Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor?
I also wasn't here at the last meeting, but viewed the meeting and feel I can vote on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell?
I'll move the approval of the minutes.
Or second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Smith. So a motion by Commissioner O'Donnell and a second by Commissioner Smith to adopt the minutes as distributed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We have a couple of desk items this evening, I believe, staff. Is that right?
Yes, there are two desk items for 1-5928 Union, which is item number one on the agenda. One of them is relative to the story polls on the site that were modified. This is just a written documentation of the email that the Commission received yesterday alerting you that we had made some modifications to the story polls. And the second is some correspondence from a neighbor that lives adjacent to Lot 2, and it's relative to drainage. Staff will be prepared to answer any questions on this email when we get to that item on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. We have no requested continuances this evening. Each member of the Planning Commission also serves on other committees of the town. There was a meeting earlier this afternoon of the Historic Preservation Committee, and I believe Commissioner O'Donnell is prepared to report on that meeting.
Yes, thank you. We considered four matters this evening. The first was number 18, Filmer Avenue, as to whether the building there could be demolished. Since it was a pre-1941 building, after listening to the matter and reviewing the evidence, we decided that it could be. That was our decision. Also, we had a matter at 17265 Wedgewood Avenue, and on that one, the state of the evidence was such that we were able to review it, remove it from the historical resources inventory, but we did not pass on the demolition at that time. That will come later, but not before that commission. We also considered 303 University Avenue, which was simply basically an upgrade to an existing building with like-kind material, and that was approved. We also considered 256 Bachmann Avenue, which is a matter which was not approved. It is a home which was built in 1895, and it either needs substantial modifications or it doesn't. It wasn't quite clear exactly what it needed, so we have continued it and we will, I think, come back to it in short order.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Are there questions about the Historic Preservation Committee? There was also a General Plan Committee meeting this afternoon. I think Commissioner Seauk is prepared to report on that meeting.
Yes, today we did meet. Today at 5:00, we normally meet at 5:30, but because of the complexity of the issue, we met a half hour earlier. Two large items. One was introduction of new committee members, actually. Our Chair Erickson is now on our committee, as well as Bob Byer, and Commissioner Bourgeois was re-elected as our Chair for incoming 2013. The big item that was discussed was the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone that was referred back to the General Plan Committee from the Town Council. We looked at the 41 sites that had been previously approved, or I should say not approved, but looked at, and of those there were four guiding questions that staff had asked us to look at. One was of the five previous sites that were recommended to Town Council. Should any of those continue to be considered? There were four other sites that were analyzed in the 2010 General Plan. Should those also be considered? Should any of the remaining of the 41 sites be considered? And are there any alternate sites? It was very well attended. We had great feedback. The next meeting is March 27, and we strongly urge those that are following this to share any feedback and research that they have been doing to the committee so that all of that can be incorporated into future direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Seauk. Any questions for Commissioner Seauk about that? Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a continued public hearing from the January 23rd meeting of the Commission, considering architectural site application S-12-39, requesting approval to construct a new single-family residence at 15928 Union Avenue. Are there, may I have a show of hands of Commissioners who have visited the property under consideration? Sorry, one has. Are there any other disclosures by Commissioner at this time about this particular item? If not, Ms. Avila, will we have a brief report? So the staff just pointed out to me that I-
Seeing that we have no one who wants to speak on it, we'll move back to Agenda Item Number One and ask the staff for the report.
Good evening. The Planning Commission last considered this on January 23rd, and continuing the matter, asking the applicant to address six items. Those are all outlined in the staff report. We do have the applicant's engineer, or the project engineer available this evening. We have town engineering staff available, and we also have the town's consultant, Jill Bicknell from EOA, and they're all available to answer questions on drainage, since that appeared to be the primary concern last time. The applicant has modified the plans to make the two larger windows on the left side of the house smaller, high, clear-story windows. They changed the door off the nook to a window, and we have added a condition requiring any lighting in the lantern element, which is the pop-up element, to be below the windowsill and to be down-directed. We also modified the condition on landscaping to require all of the planting shown on the plan to be planted prior to final inspection, so that the trees and landscape screening are all required to be implemented and put in before we finalize the house and allow an occupancy. Staff's available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for the staff at this time? Commissioner Seauk?
Just a quick question. We have one of the desk items specific about the bioswale and the composition of it. Have the engineers had a chance to review this?
Yes, they have.
Okay. And so, is it best to ask our staff, or is it best to ask the applicant's engineers of the, just an explanation of this?
We could start with our staff. They did come prepared to answer that question, and if you need any information from the project engineer, I'm sure they'd be happy to contribute.
Okay. If you could just walk me through, unfortunately, I don't know much about the differences in the soil, and so if you could just explain to me the desk item and if there's a significance between the clay that is being mentioned versus the native soil?
Absolutely. Based on my understanding of the email from Mr. Mangano here, he has a question regarding the type of soils that's being put back into the, there's a terminology here that either vegetative swell or bio-swell. The constructed swells for Lot 2 and Lot 1, the lots on Pararoma, it was constructed for the fruit plants with the native materials put back in, and the plans that's being proposed today, the proposed swell is with an alternative type of soil for what we call, you know, for bio-swell soil. At the time when the plan was approved for the R2 lots, they were under a different permit or regulations. They were not required to do so. There was not a soil specification that was approved for the county as overall for this type of construction. Since then, there has been one in place, and even though this project was approved at the time, they were technically grandfathered in, but then the applicant decided to go with what is the latest requirement from the town and from, you know, the overall with the C3 requirements. And Jill's here. She can answer any further questions if you have so.
And just a follow-up. Okay, so currently, with the current bioswale, it does meet the most current NPDs requirements?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the second question I have with regard to the desk item, the detention areas were dramatically reduced. Can you just speak to that? Detention areas meaning the bioswales, or are we talking about, and again, I'm looking at the desk item that was-
I'm not quite sure if it's reduced, because there has been a number of iterations and calculations based on the previous and improvised area, and some of the plans that's mentioned here, it was the progress set. And then with the progress set, as they make improvements to the plan sets, such as previous pavers, therefore, different, you know, different requirement comes in. And the last approved plan set, they looked at all what was proposed and constructed, and therefore, it was reviewed based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the staff at this time? If not, we'll move to the public portion of public hearing, give the applicant an opportunity to address the Commission for up to five minutes. Mr. Jeans?
I will speak for a couple of minutes and just go over a few things and then hand it over to the civil engineer. Okay, so the revision that we did on the site plan, this is now the retaining wall. This is 15 feet. It was originally at 11 all the way across, and it now returns. We also changed the trees at the front to have three street trees along here, because now the wall is set back further, and these trees are fairly tall. That will block the view, hopefully, for the Martinez who see traffic approaching along the street. We think that's a positive change. There are minor other changes on that sheet as well, but they're the big ones. The left elevation, now you can see the new, instead of large windows at Stephanie Lynett's direction, this is what she will be looking at. So there's virtually nothing that is a privacy issue now. And around the corner, this originally was a door, and it's now a window. These were the only two sheets that we've changed. We didn't go through and change everything, because we felt that this reflected very well what you wanted, and if you approve it, obviously, that's what we designed, that's what we built. If there are questions later on that, I'll deal with that. This is my personal mistake. There was a screw-up on the height of the story poles. They were measured from pad grade, not floor grade, so they were installed too low. They have been adjusted. I'm going to give you each a copy of that, because you can see it better. These are the new elevated story poles, and they were raised 18 inches. So that reflects accurately what the building will be. They're correct on the plans, they're correct on everything, all the documentation you've seen, but this corrects them in the field. I'm now going to pass this over to Terry, who is going to talk about the drainage.
Good evening, Chair Erickson and Commissioners. I'm Terry Shavchek, civil engineer. We were asked to look at the drainage design on this property. It wasn't originally our project, but we've come into it of late. And I had prepared a memo that should be in your packet. It's got a couple of colored pictures with it. That doesn't show up too well, but you have that photograph. So there were some photographs that were presented by a neighbor at the last hearing that depicted some runoff that was moving through side yard swales and into the public street. What occurred in the storms of, I think it was December 23rd, there was another one earlier in the month, was statistically a two-to-five-year storm. So the intensities weren't as high as what the public street system is designed for. In storm drainage design, there's statistical probabilities and risk management issues that say that, for instance, your backyard, under today's standards, is designed for a two-year storm. The street itself is designed to keep a 10-year storm within the pipe, and then the full section of the street in a 100-year storm is designed to convey 100-year storm, hopefully without property damage. So there's different levels of protection that occur in terms of the various locations. So what occurred in December 23rd was that the two-to-five-year storm actually flooded the electrical connection for the pump system on, I believe it's Parcel 1. And so what was occurring was the pump system was inactive, so there was an additional flow coming through the side yard swell that wasn't being collected and pumped back up toward Union Avenue. So that's been remedied since, and the electrical connection has been raised such that that won't recur. Another issue with this property is that there is a rather large watershed, and that's what this image was to represent. It's approximately 25 acres that is the hill face up above Blossom Hill Road, and presently, without the completion of the improvements along the frontage of Union Avenue, the water that comes off of Blossom Hill Road on the easterly side of Union Avenue simply barrels through the existing lot that's unimproved and heads for the applicant's other lot, as well as the neighbor that was having the storm drainage issues. In the improvements in design for the new construction on Parcel 1, and Parcel 1 is the applicant's property, I misspoke before, will actually raise the rear of the lot by a foot and a half to change the drainage pattern such that there's surface flow from the back of the lot toward Union Avenue. In addition, there'll be continuous swell around the perimeter of the lot.
Can we get you to wrap up pretty quickly?
There'll be a swell around the perimeter of the lot that will, in fact, collect all the water that falls within the lot and take it back out toward Union Avenue. So with the improvement of the curve and gutter on Union Avenue and the raising of this lot at the backside, this condition where water comes off the street directly toward the neighbor's property will be remedied. And with the repair of the pump, a 10-year storm would be conveyed back into the system that is in Union Avenue, and there won't be this flooding condition that occurred in December. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Shavchek or Mr. Jeans? Commissioner Talisfor?
Yes, thank you for your explanation. I think I understand it, but I'm wondering, as an extra precaution, and perhaps it's not necessary, but have you thought or were storm drains ever constructed or French drains, or thought about for these properties, as an extra precaution besides what you're doing now? If not, why not?
Yeah, the French drains typically put in to control groundwater that's coming up from below, and in this instance, there isn't high groundwater. This location is more subject to surface flow.
Commissioner Seauk?
Okay, thank you for coming and looking at this. As you have probably heard, this was an issue that was discussed heavily at the last meeting, and so I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding of the current conditions, as well as what's being proposed. What you've just explained in terms of the watershed and the existing drainage totally makes sense to me. What I'm concerned about, though, is considering Lot 1 has not been built yet, and therefore, none of these proposed remedies have been put in place, what would have caused the flooding in the neighbor's lot, the neighbor's house at 112 Panorama? Is it simply the sump pump that failed?
It's more the volume of water that comes off the street. If, again, you look at the contour of the existing ground on Lot 1, it's headed directly, directly and diagonally this direction, and this is the neighbor's house here. So, you know, it was a combination of the surface flow, but also the failure of this pump system that is about here graphically, that is supposed to take any water off these other two lots, I guess these are 2 and 3, excuse me, and take that and put it in a pump system that actually discharges it out to Union Avenue.
Okay, that makes sense, but I guess if this is an existing condition that hasn't been improved, and he hasn't had any flood issues in the past eight years or since he's renovated, the question is, if it's an existing condition already, and the only change that has occurred is development of Parcels 2 and 3, has the development of those two parcels contributed to more surface flow going towards that property?
I can answer that a little bit, in that all of the neighbors have had water underneath their crawl spaces, and they all have sump pumps, they all have problems. These problems have been ongoing for many years. Mr. Mangano remodeled his house eight or nine years ago, and apparently has not had problems until this last winter. I don't know why he had problems. He has a French drain around his property, so had there been water coming from Lots 2 and 3, it should have been caught by the French drain and taken out. I don't know whether it was water that was on his property in heavy rain. I don't know if it came because of the failed electrical system where a lot of water was being channeled down there. But traditionally, or rather, consistently over the last several years, and all the other neighbors who haven't remodeled their houses have underground water problems under their basements. What we have now is a partially implemented solution, which with the implementation of Lot 1, it will complete the solution and hopefully remedy a lot of these drainage problems, and that's what I think Terry is explaining.
Thanks, Tony.
And if I, just one last question. Very simple. What's to prevent another electrical failure? How do you make sure that that doesn't happen again? I'm assuming they were tested prior- I'm assuming they were tested prior to move in.
Yeah, the electrical outlet and the fault interrupt has been raised. It was previously, from what I saw, you know, six inches above the wet well of the pump system, the actual top. So when there was water splashing through, it actually shorted out. So it's been raised to about 12 inches above the wet well and pump system.
It was raised, and it was also caulked around the outside so that water can't get into the box directly from rain. And it was put out of the path of the flowing water so that water can't get in from underneath. Hopefully, that will solve the problem.
Commissioner Talisfor.
I have a follow-up to that, just for more explanation. Not for anything, but in some storm, when all the electricity goes out, and we're in a storm, a 10-year storm, a five-year storm, whatever, what else could you do to prevent that kind of a situation?
Yeah.
From happening again? Because, I mean, what we saw and what we had testimony of is pretty apparent.
Yeah, that's an excellent, excellent question. If there were the failure again, then the surface system is supposed to be designed as a fail-safe situation where it would convey the water to the public street across the back of the sidewalk and not over into the neighbor's lot. So it's supposed to be self-contained and stay on our side of the fence.
So it'll go to Panorama as an overflow if the electric power fails. And that's where it's always gone in the past, except a lot of it has gone directly onto the neighboring property. What we're trying to do is control it on Mr. Grant's side of the fence, on all the properties down that side, so that it doesn't go to the neighbor's property. Hopefully, it's pumped up when the pumps are working and catch it. Lot One will go directly to Union. It won't flow down to, towards Panorama anymore because there's a catch basin that takes it to, directly to Union and through the storm drain system. The other pump catches the Panorama lots and takes that water up to the Union catch basin and then in, on Lot One, and then down into Union. So we're trying to remedy the situation for all of those neighbors. It's just we only have a small half of a solution because, as Mr. Shevcek said, you've got 25 acres of water trying to dump their water onto this lot. And we have to catch it at the curb mainly, but anything then on the lot, we want to catch and control into the storm drain system.
So adding extra drainage precautions such as, you know, storm drains or French drains on these properties, would that help at all for overflow or when it doesn't, you know?
Well, they are there. They just not have been, they have not been hooked up yet because the grade hasn't been set to the right level. So the town has to ensure that they don't get mud into those drainage systems. When this is implemented, hopefully by the end of the summer or whenever the project is built out, all the water on Lot One will be controlled on Lot One. Lot Two and Three should be working now, but all they're doing is trying to control their own water. They're not able really to control the excess water coming down Panorama across Lot One, onto their property, and then down into, through the bio swales to Panorama. It's too excessive. So if we can control it at two places, one, the curb will be huge because that will take this 25 acres of water and stop it at the curb, put it into the storm drain right away. It won't even be able to get onto the lot anymore. And then everything behind the curb will be controlled and taken into two separate storm drainage grates and put into Union. That, the pipe is there, the grates are there, but they're set high at the moment, so mud doesn't go into them.
Are there other questions for the applicant at this point? Commissioner Birch.
So I wanted to ask you if, when you were looking at this and for the drainage, if you did look at the street upgrades that were occurring as far as the gutters and the curbs, and if you felt that what they had designed here in addition with the curbs and the gutters would mitigate a lot of what is flowing down through Blossom Hill? And if you felt that the three new drainage inlets that'll be going into the existing 18-inch pipe will adequately pick up water on that parcel and in that area and reroute it over to the existing storm main? Or if you feel, even with all of those in place, we're still going to be seeing an issue? I would like to know if you've looked at all of those aspects, both of those projects together, and if you feel we're covered.
We actually did the subdivision at the corner that's Leewood Court. And at the time, we had to anticipate these drainage issues. So the main that was installed by Greenbrier for those houses was extended far down on Union. I don't think it went all the way to the shopping center, but nearly did. And that main was sized for all of these conditions. And so when this new catch basin is installed and connected, then it will take all of this water, and it was anticipated that this lot would come into the system also. So yes, there is capacity in this. It's a little bit of overkill because there's three catch basins right in a row, but it definitely will drink it up.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicants at this time? If not, we'll, thank you very much. We will now invite comments from members of the public. If you've not already turned in a speaker card, we would ask you to please do so at this time. And remind you that you have three minutes to speak, address the commission, and when the warning light comes on, you've got about 30 seconds left. First, we would call Yasmin Martinez.
So I'm just standing before you today just to reiterate our same issues.
Can you pull the microphone down just slightly? Thank you.
Do you hear me now? Just basically our same, simple concerns about our privacy, and that being the trees being replaced, and also because we don't have any protection right now. And one of the other things that we have been talking about and hoping that the developer would, you know, would think about is helping to replace this fence that borders our properties. Because as it sits right now and at the height of what this house will now be, it's, our fence is very low. We need to have that fence replaced at least a foot higher to give us privacy. Right now, we see the whole street of Union. We have all the lights coming into our house from the traffic. It's just completely wide open where there was always once trees. But replacing the fence would help. And also, he, we have worked with them and agreed, and I hope they will uphold their promise to lining that area from our house all the way down to put trees so that we get some privacy because some of the other, the other homes that were built with a balcony, if they stand out there, they see our whole backyard, pool, everything. There's no trees to cover nothing. We're totally exposed right now. So those are our concerns, helping replace that fence that becomes a neighbor fence, and also the trees lining that area, keeping to their promise.
Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor.
Can you tell us your address? I don't know.
101 Leewood Court. We're the corner house.
You're the corner house right next door?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there other questions for the speaker? If not, thank you, ma'am. Tom Mangano.
This is a little unfair because three minutes just doesn't get it, but I request in the event that this massive house gets approved, that it's approved based on two conditions, that the curb being, the sidewalk, and the street drains that were conditioned for parcel two and three be completed prior to issuing of the building permit for P1, then engineering be required to document and inspect every fill aspect of every bio swale and retention area, and that they specify that it was built as planned. I'm somewhat shocked of what I heard tonight. No, surface water is not our problem. It's underground water. And my complaint has always been that that bio swale has to function as a true bio swale. And we've designed and installed a dry well when there's no power two feet from my property line. And if you read Condition 31 of Drainage, it says no dry well shall be installed within 10 feet of a property line. What happens when power goes out? What happens when someone doesn't put a GFI plug right and doesn't put it at the right heist? What happens when I go out there last Thursday and the pump's on? I go out there last Friday, the pump's on, and it's getting louder and louder. Well, the pump just died Monday night. It's gone. It's dead. It's burned out, probably, unless someone... Now, I have a neighbor who's now responsible for that pump. He doesn't live there. I don't even know who he is. And what motivation does he have to fix that pump? He's uphill on that whole bio swale. He's sitting on a concrete curb. I'm sitting under an 18-inch crawlway that is seeping, can seep water under my drive. The reason I'm getting more water is because you're concentrating more water in that area. The original design that wasn't put in had retention areas. It had 2,000 feet of retention areas. It was on the plan. That plan was changed. And then a new plan, which was stamped, and the first page has notes that say bio swale fill. They didn't put bio swale fill. They put native soil, clay. That's why you have bio swales, because you don't want clay. Clay is the worst soil you have. I have a degree in engineering. I have a master's degree in engineering. I have a master's degree in architecture, and I understand some of these things. It wasn't built right. The worst fear of a real architect is the developer who doesn't build per spec. That's why the town is supposed to inspect and understand what plans are in front of them. Why was a GFI plug put in at ground level? You're supposed to put them one foot above the water.
Can we get you to?
Want to talk?
Mr. Mangano, can we get you to wrap up real quickly? Thank you.
Then you can talk.
Can we get you to wrap up real quickly?
Well, he always talks when I'm talking.
Okay, we will let the next speaker come forward. Thank you very much.
No questions?
No questions for the speaker? Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just have one question. The questions we asked of staff before we started with the public was diametrically opposed to what you just said on what the bio swale, the fill is. And I'm in no position to judge... Let me finish. I'm in no position to judge either, except that normally the staff has no axe to grind. Sometimes speakers do. Why do you think that the soil there is not as just told us, that is to say, proper soil for that function?
Because the plans that I see and the plans that were stamped on those dates, there are cross-sections to the bio swales. Those bio swales call out sections, and those sections denote a specific detail that says this soil, this is, there's a chart of the soil you're supposed to use, and it says, prior to ordering that soil, check with the town and get approval that the soil is correct. Now, I've heard on multiple occasions, and I think Tran said it again tonight, that in their interpretation, the, what, their interpretation is that native soil was fine. I don't read the plans that way. And I don't know how it was grandfathered. I just don't understand that. You know, they could be perfectly right, and, you know, I don't know everything, but I do know how to read a plan.
That's not what she said, however.
Pardon?
That is not what she just told us.
What'd I say? I mean, I...
She told us that they had not put in the native soil. And we can check, and we should, but when you're through, we'll check. Maybe I misunderstood.
Well, I observed those, the fill on those, and I think someone else will come in tonight and who has observed that, and I could tell you that native soil was put in above the filter paper, above the rock between the filter paper and above, where the specification was for 18 inches of soil that was to be approved by the town. Now, if the town has a document that says that it was done and approved, then I'm wrong.
Are there other questions for the speaker at this time? If not, thank you very much. Call Luis Martinez.
My name is Luis Martinez. I live at 101 Leewood Court, same house as my wife, I believe. I'm here to tell you a little bit of a story. These are papers that I sent back in 2009. This is what, excuse me, this is what my property used to look like. We had trees behind us. Everybody would love to come down to us. We barbecue, we'd have parties, everything. Nobody could see us. We couldn't even see the traffic out there. There were so many trees and things, it was beautiful. When this whole thing started, I did a little rendition, and I said, okay, if we're going to build a home, it's going to look either like this or like that. This is a single-story, this is a two-story. Okay? They said, no, that's not going to happen. It's going to be smaller than that. You'll never even see it. So this is what we have today. I took these pictures today, just before I came here at 6:00. And what I did is I filled in, I'm a little bit of an artist. I know Photoshop. I just went in, filled that in. It's a lot easier to see it this way than just to see the sticks that you can see it right through. It doesn't give you the right interpretation. If you can see here, the houses are almost exactly the same. This house is almost as big as a two-story home, except it's a single-story. I mean, I don't mind. My house is a two-story. Okay? It's, whose house is bigger, his or mine? I don't care. I'm actually four feet higher than his, so I don't have a problem. I know other people do. But this is what I have a problem with. This is what it looks like from behind my house. Now, I can put back the previous drawing that I showed you, and we have a little bit of a controversy here. It's almost as tall as a two-story in some places, but not quite so much in others. All I did was fill in all around the red part that was back there, and that's what I'm going to be looking at. So I'm concerned, once again, just like my wife, we would like to see trees put on. We would like to have a little bit of what Los Garros is all about, having trees behind, you know, seeing the beauty. I don't want to be looking at another person's home. And if you can see how small the fence looks here, I can almost stand up and the fence is up to me like this because I'm four feet above. This is a six-foot fence sitting on two feet concrete. So if you look at it altogether, it's eight foot tall. And when I approach a fence, it only reaches me up to here. I mean, if you look at, let me show you a different perspective. You see these little chairs there? The chair is almost as tall as the fence. So if I'm sitting down and I turn around, I can see right through the lattice. That's how tall the fence is from my side. So that's what we've been saying all the time. We would like to have a taller fence. Because in reality, even though it's almost an eight-foot fence from our property, it's a very tiny fence. See, it's all about perspective, where you're standing. From the other side, oh my God, that thing is humongous. But from my side, I got a little fence. You're welcome to come to my house anytime you want to, and I can show you exactly what I mean about every light of every car comes in, even to our house where we're watching. This is, we've got a beautiful window, bay window, and all we see is... even to our house where we're watching. This is, we've got a beautiful window, bay window, and all we see is lights coming at us. So, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Bouchard?
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. I was wondering if you've seen the revised landscape plans that they've proposed and the number and locations of trees that they're proposing to...
Tony approached me a little bit before I was supposed to come up, and I told him I'll talk to him later about the plans and things. No, I haven't seen him.
So, you haven't seen him?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to make sure that I... I think you essentially asked for two things. One is trees to help you get back kind of where you were, as I understand it.
Correct.
And secondly, a higher fence.
Yes, that would help out a lot. From my perspective, yes.
Is there something else that I missed?
No, I mean, the only reason I gave you the whole perspective is because we've been told all these different things all along. And it ends up being a big home. And I'm just concerned that if that's all I'm going to be seeing, it's not going to be exactly the same thing when I bought my home. I'd like to see trees and things, and it's just nicer to see trees than to see another person's home.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understood, and I think I do. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I have been to the property numerous times. But the question I could not see, and I know it's because of the grading, is there room on your side of the fence to grow some very tall trees?
Right, where the fence is, is a two-foot-wide concrete barrier. And on the other side, there's like a four-foot swale. That's where all the water gets taken out of the property. So, literally, the whole thing is like six to eight feet of concrete. After that, there's two feet of concrete going up, a barrier, and then my property.
Well, I know that from their side, but I'm saying on your side of the property, I know that you have the pool. Is that what you just explained to me?
Correct. Oh, yeah, yeah. Then the pool starts on the left side corner, and it extends to a third of the property. On the other side, I have my solar panels for the pool. Yeah, so it's...
I could see some of it. I just couldn't see the whole...
I can't put trees in front of that because then the solar panels disappear. Because the way the sun is, the solar panels have to be pulled back to the end of the property so that it always gets sun, so...
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Martinez? Thank you.
Thank you.
Call Stephanie Lynett.
I'm Stephanie Lynett at 15910 Union Avenue. As you know, the half-acre directly next to lots 1, 2, or, well, lot 1, 2, and 3, actually. I just want to digress a little bit. I wanted to talk about tonight. When I was hearing about the drainage issue, I have a basement. And my basement is about eight feet deep, and it's a good-sized basement. It's my laundry room, and there's a lot of space. The drainage system there is such that it gets the groundwater coming up, and then it diverts out into a drainage system. So, to say that we don't have deep-water rivers going under our house, we do. And I've spoken to people farther down Union Avenue with the same issue. So, just know it's not just surface water that goes on over there. I do want to address, you know, I was appreciative last week of the change in the windows and the doors. And even though I thought the house was still too large, I was going to go along with it. However, now that we have found out that it is now that the poles were not reflective until the other day of the true height, and I still think it's going to be more than 18 inches, that 18 inches to two feet makes a huge difference in the impact and the size of this, especially when you put on a tower and you put up four more chimneys on top of that. It is just, something has to be done to bring it down a bit. Even, it's larger than the two-story houses. It's as tall as Martinez's. And as he said, they're three to four feet higher ground level. I know town council had the lot number two house lowered two feet because they said that that was just too much mass, you know? And I would like to consider that. I mean, I, you know, I think it's a beautifully designed house. That's not the issue. You know, the issue is compatibility in a transition area. Leewood was the transition area. You know, this is more on the lines of the size across the street for me, and I think we all know what that's about. So, I don't know. Just something has to be done to bring it down, tone it down. The drainage is an issue. You know, and I know that people are wanting to hurry up and get this done, but I don't find that a good reason to make decisions and final decisions and move on with it because, well, it'll be put off until April. And I know that many of us have been told that we're costing them a lot of money. And I don't find that to be a legitimate reason to not continue on with things.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Lynett? Commissioner Burke?
Have you in any way been impacted by the runoff water that we're hearing about from everyone else being directly adjacent to these two? I haven't heard that from you.
Yes. Oh, yeah. I mean, it was coming directly my way on Lot 2. And, you know, it just got diverted. And you know what? I did see clay dirt put back in there. I did see clay dirt being put in there, and that's when I saw all of this runoff, I thought, wow. It's not porous enough for the water to sink down to do whatever it's supposed to do. I do know that in my basement, some walls are getting some cracks in it that have never existed before. So, I just think the water's just... It's a, you know, Mrs. Pierce said at one time, you know, "This is just odd soil over here. It rolls and it moves," and I've seen it. I've seen it in my own yard. So, you know, the drainage issue is no superficial thing, and the waters run deep. The waters run deep. So...
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Orv Busing?
Good evening. I'm Orv Busing. I live at 15892 Union Avenue, which is the second house north of the property we're discussing. And I have a desk item that I will hope not to duplicate the items to any large degree. Perhaps I should wait until you had a chance to read that before I start. Mr. Chair?
We will just let you go on with your remarks at this time.
The height and the mass of the proposed house is, I'd like to speak to first. This one-story home is proposed to be higher than the two-story homes that were built on Panorama. Lot 2, it is three, it is six feet higher. And Lot 3, the large two-story in the corner, it is three feet higher. And this is a single-story home that's being proposed. I propose that the commission set the single-story house maximum height to the 20-foot, 3 inches as drawn on the main floor. And it's shown in the elevation diagram on the plan on drawing A3. And without the tower, and require a resubmission of new plans to this height at a future date. Street improvements. The street improvements need to be completed prior to starting any site or construction work on the property. These improvements were written, a written and signed condition of the P2 and P3 approval process, and were to be completed before a certificate of occupancy was to be given for those properties. Completion of street improvements will reduce the amount of dust and dirt distributed to neighboring homes. Also, Union Avenue is a very busy two-lane street, one of the busiest in Los Catos since the Highway 85 off-ramp came into being. Widening this area will allow delivery trucks and other construction equipment to be further away from the speeding traffic and to help prevent possible accidents. It is a safety issue as well. I propose that completion of street improvements prior to any improvements or construction on this site be a completion, a condition of approval.
Are there any questions at this time for the speaker? If not, thank you very much. We will now give the applicant three minutes to address the commission for any additional comments that they would like to make.
Street widening, I'd like to address that first. I think the town staff should probably respond to that. I would suggest that it's a sensible compromise so that the street doesn't get totally torn up during, with construction traffic, is that it be widened to the point that base rock and all the subgrades are installed. And then, before the winter, you put in the curb gutter sidewalk. That's when the heavy construction will have happened. I'm going to just throw that out as a suggestion. I'm also going to come back now to this house, this plan here. This is the fence that the Martinas were talking about. Their property dives down just before the fence, so they're only seeing what appears to be a low fence. But the property drops off. We can't put a fence higher than seven, six feet. We're precluded from doing so. So, we have a problem, especially as it's on top of there. It's a four-foot-high retaining wall with a fence on top of it. So, we're stymied. So, what we have tried to do is provide maximum screening. I spoke to Mr. Martinez's wife and said, "This is what we're planning on doing." I didn't get a chance to go back and show them the changes. But since the last plan, we have three street trees on here, which were not previously there, and three large trees here, sorry, three large trees here, all of which will be blocking oncoming traffic. What you have to understand is this is where the current non-sidewalk is. And there was a big tree here which effectively blocked that view from Mr. Martinez. But as soon as we dedicate that amount of property to the, to Union Avenue, we lost that tree. So, that was major. These trees here are to screen the view between the two houses. And we think we picked the right ones, and they're 24-inch box to start. And they'll be peeking just above the height of the 10-foot fence from our side. If he could put trees on his side, that would be phenomenal, but he doesn't have room to do it without cutting holes in the concrete and doing tree wells, which he could do. But I'm just telling you where we are. A lot has been made of mass. I do want you to look at the top drawing. That is the view from Stephanie Lynett's eye level, standing on her property, looking up. You don't see the tower. The tower is not an issue from that side. It was declared by the town consulting architect to be a very good feature that enabled the transition from the taller houses on Leewood Court down to our house and then down to the older homes that are there now. That's all we could do, and it received absolutely no negative comments at all from the town consulting architect. If there are drainage questions that come up, those, I think, will have to go as questions because we're at the end of the three-minute period. If you have questions for me or questions for Mr. Chevcek...
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. Commissioner Smith?
I have two questions, but just one. One is going to be fairly brief. I noticed today that grading was taking place, it looked like grading was taking place on the property itself. I know PG&E was there, but was there, is there work that's being done on the property today? Or...
Just in relation to digging the trenches for PG&E. So, dirt will be being moved a little bit, but there's no, effectively, nothing happening on the property to the best of my knowledge.
I thought it was probably part of the PG&E, but I wasn't sure about that. And so, then, my second question is also fairly simple, and that is, has the pump died?
No, the pump hasn't died. I believe what happened and caused Mr. Mangano's concern, and rightly so, is that I think it, the float which triggers the pump got stuck. Sometimes that happens with Tambac or something like that. And it gets stuck in the on, in the up position, which means the pump runs. Mr. Grant called, Mr. Grant came, unplugged the pump because we're not in a rainy session, and has called someone to come and fix it and look at it. But I believe that that is what happened to the pump. So, it didn't die. It was unplugged because it was running, and Mr. Grant didn't want it to burn out with no water there.
Commissioner Bouchard?
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. I'd like to give you an opportunity to comment on some of the input we got on the drainage issue, specifically the native soil issue in the bioswale, if you could comment on that. And then also, the change in, the supposed change in the retention areas that were on Lots 2 and 3 in the design, and the necessity of those, and if the design was indeed changed. Just comments that we heard, I'd like to give you the opportunity to respond to.
I think the better person to talk to that is either the consultant, Jill, who Mr. Grant paid a consulting fee to have the town use a consultant to review everything that has been
Yeah.
Written about the drainage and everything else.
I would like to hear, I would like to hear from the independent consultant.
I'm not the competent person to do that. I have my idea as to what happened, but I'm not the expert. And you've got three experts here. And I'd like to, you know, Jill, do you want to handle that? Or Terry or Trang? Because I did not read that.
I would prefer to hear from Jill, since we haven't heard from her yet. And I would like to hear another professional's opinion on it, so it'd be great.
What I did hear upfront was that the rules have changed since Lots 2 and 3 to Lot 1. And that's what I did hear from Trang. And it was implemented at the Lot 2 and 3 level originally. And we're proposing, the current Lot 1 is proposed at a slightly different level, which means the mixture for the top one foot in the bioswale will be a different mixture. That's what I heard.
Could you identify yourself for us? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jill Bicknell. I work for EOA Incorporated. I am a consultant to the town on stormwater issues, particularly what we call the C3 requirements, which are design of features to provide treatment of stormwater quality. They're typically designed for small, frequent storm events. They're not typically designed for larger flood flow events. So, I did review this project early on in 2010. And what was proposed by the engineer at that time, which was not the engineer that's here tonight, was several bioswales on the Parcels 2 and 3. And my review of it judged that they were more than adequate. For a single-family home property, they were probably conservatively large. And I made that comment and suggested that they could probably infiltrate more of the roof runoff onto the lot and also consider previous paving and other improvements. So, I think that they made changes to the size of the facilities based on my review. I did not have the opportunity to review the revised plans. So, I can't, I did review the calculations just recently in response to the concerns that came up at your last meeting. And I believe that they were properly sized for the stormwater quality design storm, which understand is smaller than a flood control event. I cannot speak to the native soil issue because the plans went through various iterations. After I reviewed it, I was also not involved with the installation, nor did I inspect the installation.
Thank you.
Other question for the consultant, Commissioner Sayoc?
Since I have you here. So, if the very first set of plans that you reviewed was in 2010?
Yes.
And you have not looked at the most recent?
I have looked at recent plans in regard to this drainage issue. But I did not do a stormwater quality C3 review of the plans after I did my initial review.
Okay, so two specific questions. The first, I think, is probably the easiest. Because this has, this project has been ongoing for many years or so, in your professional experience, when requirements do change, such as what has happened with Lot 1, would you use the most recent requirements? Or would you go with what was grandfather, what was in existence when the original set of plans were approved?
Typically, the applicant is allowed to go with the requirements that were in place when the plans were approved because we don't... when the plans were approved, because we don't want to make them keep updating the plans every time we have a regulation change. In December 1st, 2011, some new requirements for the design of these facilities came into effect in the town's permit, and as I understand it, the, the plans were approved prior to that date, so they were not asked to update them. However, we always encourage that if there are new requirements, that the applicant consider installing those. So my understanding is on parcel one, that they will be using the, the biotreatment or bioswale soil mix that is now specified in the permit, and prior to that effective date, there were no such specifications required in the permit.
My second question is, the comment that you had made that the retention basins for lots two and three were sufficient for single-family homes. When you look at the project in totality, the three parcels, and given the large watershed that it was, it was accommodating the drainage from, is it still your opinion that the bioswales for two and three are sufficient? Because it doesn't sound like it's just to accom, to accommodate those single-family homes. We're trying to divert the larger watershed that was being diverted with development of lot one. So I guess I'm, I'm asking you, looking at it in totality with the three lots, did reduction of that retention basin cause any problems from the original design to now?
Well, first of all, it isn't a basin. It's what we call a swale, which is a linear feature that collects water, the water flows through it, some of it infiltrates, some of it gets filtered by plants that are in the swale. And like I said, it was sized to treat a, the water quality design storm, which, which are small, frequent events, are going to infiltrate into that swale. For larger events, that swale is going to convey water across the property and into that inlet where the pump station is, and if it doesn't get pumped out of that inlet, it keeps going out into the street. I, I reviewed the engineer's report that was in response to your meeting last time, and my review is in your packet, and I did agree that the, that all of the improvements that are planned for parcel one, in addition to what's already on parcels two and three, were adequate to protect the adjoining properties from flooding problems, and that the improvements on parcel one will help make the drainage situation even better than it is now with the curb and gutter and the additional inlets on parcel one leading out to the storm drain on Union Avenue.
And I just have one other question. With regard to this pump, it's failed twice now. Is, is there's a, could there just be a faulty pump and just replacement, or is it something that is common with all other sump pumps?
I was not asked to review the details of the pump, and I don't have information on why it failed, so I'm sorry I can't answer that question.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for?
There are actually, there are actually two pumps. There's a redundant system. One pump is set lower than the other. That's the one that works all the time. In very heavy storms, the water in the basin fills up, and both pumps work. There are two pipes going. If one pump fails, the water will fill up to the level of the second pump, and the second pump will kick in. That's how it's meant to operate. That's how it's designed to operate, but I believe that the float in the lower pump tripped into the on position and got stuck, and that's all that's happened. I don't believe the pump has failed. I think the float got screwed up. There's some, probably some debris in that little catch basin, and that's why Mr. Grant has asked the installer to come out and have a look at it.
Are there other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Talasfor.
We're going to switch gears here a little bit, and I, in lieu of what people have said tonight about the height and the mass being larger than they thought, I have to tell you that after getting the email from staff about the story poles being repositioned and the netting being repositioned, when I went out there to look at this, I was, it was apparent that it was a lot larger than I had seen the first time. And, and in fact, I kept thinking this was a two-story house, when in fact it's a single-story house, but the impact is my problem. And although you did address the lantern-type effect of lighting in the tower, Mr. Jeans, I went back to the design guideline, design guidelines that we use here in Los Gatos, and under that, it's, and this just jumped out at me, and I have to ask you to tell me how this, why this is on, in the house, and why it's been incorporated into your house, but it says, "Avoid, avoid," this is for new building, "avoid monumental scaled forms such as towers or turrets that contrast with the neighborhood architectural forms, as well as avoid the use of too many active building forms added to the mass of the building. An excessive use of roof forms is a common problem." And if I counted correctly, I think I see about three different roof forms here. So that all being said, what that does is adds to the mass and bulk of a new structure that's supposed to be acting as a transition of this neighborhood. We do not want you to mimic the buildings that are there, but we also don't want you to stand apart. It almost looks like it is, it is the single, only house there. It doesn't, it doesn't fit in to my eye because of all of this. And tonight, we've heard from neighbors that said that the house probably should be lowered. So my question is, my question is, if you could explain to me how the tower came to be when, in the design guidelines, and I know you've read them and you're familiar with them.
We wanted to do something that was traditionally Californian, and Spanish Mission is one of the true Californian architectural styles, so that was what we focused on. We also saw the taller houses that are elevated on the right-hand side on Leewood Court, and we felt that to provide a bridge between the smaller homes on the left, which will ultimately come to you over the next couple of decades, and someone will tear them down and rebuild them, and we wanted to provide a transition from that area to the taller area on Leewood Court on the right-hand side. When we submitted the architectural plans, they went to Cannon, who is very rigorous about looking at design guidelines, and came back saying that this was a very good transition between the smaller houses on the left and the larger houses on the right-hand side, and that they, he provided no negative feedback. You can ask, you can either look for that document in your file or ask the staff about that, but that was in fact the case. We did make sure that the tower was as low as possible. We did a very low-pitched roof on the top, so all you have there is enough room to get the clear-story windows past the ridge. So it's, it's very small. The other thing to note is that, as you see it here, it's positioned well away from the, the neighboring house here, and also, as I showed in a previous picture, it can't be seen when you're on the property of the houses on the other side. As to the roof structures, they're all gable, gable roofs. We didn't do any hips because we felt that that was the right way to go, and I think it actually is fairly well-conceived.
So I know that, that one of the reasons that you wanted to put the tower in was to relight the, the room below it, correct?
Yes, there's a, there's a library there.
So did you ever look at another, did you ever look at another alternative to a, a tower?
We did originally, but we, we wanted to provide the transition between the much taller house on the right-hand side, and part of that is the fact that it's a slightly taller house than the peak of the tower, but it's sitting six feet higher, four feet on top of the wall, plus the slope up of grade, so it's sitting six or seven feet higher at the ground level to ours. So you really have a significant step when you look from house, Stephanie Lynett's house, to this ta, to, to this main roof, to the tower, and then to the houses on Leewood Court, and I think it does provide a transition.
I noticed that on A1 of the plans, you did have, call out for possibly a skylight, so I was curious as to why. I thought that was a really reasonable solution and would have really made the rest of the house, the importance of the window wall on the facade of it would have really stood out. You know, it's very nicely done there. So this other element that's raised above, that's causing neighbors concerned for privacy, lighting, and also just adding to the, the bulk, I just am curious as to, I think that would have, I mean, how serious did you look at that alternative?
I'm trying to see what you referred to as a skylight on A1. Could you tell me where you see that?
I'm sorry, it's on A1 in the, what you gave us this.
Oh, it says, "Skylight or clear story."
Right.
Right. That, that's describing those windows around there to bring that in.
Skylight, skylight is a, you know, it's a whole different element.
Well, we could have, we could have taken.
I'm just curious as to why you didn't pursue that, because I think that would have been a very eloquent and integrated solution to your situation, and I, can I appreciate it?
Well, it would have not changed the, the height of the, the building. Maybe it would have dropped it about a foot. The tower, the roof of the tower would have become a, a 12-foot-by-12-foot skylight. So it was going to be a pyramidal skylight on top of the tower instead of the roof. We felt that that didn't, was not in keeping with the architecture, so we implemented it as, as a roof with the clear, with the clear-story windows, which is very traditional on Spanish Mission design.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
My understanding, in part, is that some of the neighbors are concerned with the height of the building. Forget the tower, just the height of the building. I mean, I think that's what I've heard. I saw your demonstration of why the tower, virtually it was not seeable from Miss Lynett's property, and I accept that drawing. I still think the neighbors were saying the house, in its height, is as high as a two-story building. I'm just asking you, is that so? And if it is so, why is that the case?
No, it's not so, except at the tower element. One of the people, I forget who it was, said, "Why don't we set the height of 20'3" as the height limit for the house?" That is the height called out on, on the plans for the height of everything except that tower element, which is as, as best positioned as I could for the two neighbors on the left and right. It's slightly closer to the higher house. It's further away from the lower house to provide a transition, but the height of the house is 20'3 in all other areas. If you look at the true ugly architectural elevation, this calls out 20'3 all the way along the length of the house. As it approaches Stephanie Lynett, it, it steps down to her fence, which is 10 feet further here, and then her house is there, and then 70-odd feet away from that property is the tower, and it really is a one-story house with a tower element that is a feature that the architect, the consulting architect really liked.
Would you remind, would you remind me? I can't read the, how much higher than 23 feet is the top of the tower?
I think the, the peak is 26'10, but when you look at it from any vantage point, you never see the top, because we've depressed it so much that really what you're seeing is, I think, 23'8 or whatever, around the, the eve of the tower, because everyone looks slightly up at that. You don't see the roof. Even when you look at the, the red netting on the photograph that you have there, you don't see the top of that tower from almost any vantage point. So it really, it barely looks, you know, there's, here's the front elevation, too. So you, you barely see the, the peak. So 20'3 is the main house, and the tower element was deemed very appropriate by the consulting architect, so we would like to keep it if you would allow it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talasfor.
Mr. Jeans, I don't really want to correct you on that, but Mr. Cannon's letter is in front of me. He doesn't mention the tower, except to say that the lantern, that it has, the lantern above the library has some potential to create a light annoy, annoyance.
Right, and we addressed that.
I, I know that, but he does not say that you should keep, he doesn't give you, he does not compliment the tower. He doesn't mention it except for that, so I didn't want anyone here to misinterpret what you're saying.
All right. Let me, let me, let me rephrase that by saying, I, I deal a lot with Mr. Cannon, and I get a lot of reviews, and if he doesn't like something, he absolutely comments on it, and when he thinks it's appropriate, he doesn't really comment.
Are there other questions for the applicant? If not, we'll close the public portion of the public hearing, thank the applicant, and thank the members of the public who spoke this evening, and ask the commission, do you have questions, comments, or a motion? Commissioner Birch.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Because I'm not, I'm, I'm not certain, I'd like to know in a situation like this, where there is a fence that falls between two properties, such as what we've got here, and, and the one property has a swale or something like that that truly is not buildable on, do they ever give exemptions for the fence height in that kind of situation between the two property owners?
A fence higher than six feet requires a fence height exception. The community development director does have the ability to approve a fence up to eight feet high if there's a privacy impact that can be demonstrated. There's a criteria in the code that allows that. We measure the fence height from the highest adjoining grade, so the best we could do would be to approve a seven-to-eight-foot fence as measured from the highest adjoining grade, and I have to look at the Martinez's property specifically to see exactly where the grade is on their side of the fence. As Mr. Jeans mentioned, the fence is quite tall on that side because it's on top of a retaining wall. So if, if it was low enough on the Martinez's side, we could potentially add to the height of the fence, but I, we'd have to actually go out to the site and check that out.
Great, thank you. My other question was concerning the infamous pumps. It sounds like, not that they're faulty, but that perhaps it's a maintenance issue of keeping them clean and, and doing a few things like that, and I'd like to know when something like this falls on a private property, how the town regulates that the maintenance is being kept up? Because I, I know from experience, they recommend a minimum, an annual maintenance on these pieces of equipment.
Currently, currently, the applicant is going through the process with a stormwater maintenance agreement with the town. Each of those, those homes will have one agreement. When the other two lot, the lots that's been sold, they have signed an agreement with the homeowner stating that, and they did review the preliminary document. It has not been finalized yet, because due to the third house being built, the, the current homeowners of the other two lots have signed an agreement stating that they will accept the maintenance once the final documents been approved by the town. And within that document, if for whatever reasons that the homeowner failed to do so, we have the right to get going there and, and fix the problems, and of course, bill the homeowners for whatever the cost that. of course, bill the homeowners for whatever the cost that we need, for the fix of it.
But if that was the case, it would be only that we were, or the town was called in if something occurred, if it failed. So if, for whatever reason, it hadn't been maintained and there was a large rain, there wouldn't be somebody verifying that annually they had completed the maintenance and submitted the paperwork?
The stormwater agreement that they will need to sign, it has a schedule for maintenance on certain items, such as the swell or the pump. And we are occasionally, because it's part of the C3 guideline, occasionally we go out there and we follow up on it. We check into the homeowners, make sure that, you know, any maintenance documents that they shall have, that we would like to see.
Mr. Talasfor.
Could I be clear about that? Are you saying that you do that on a regular basis? It's on a calendar? Or is it only when you're called?
It's, we do that on a regular basis. Every annual, every year, we have to prepare an annual report to the state. And each of these projects is reported in the annual report. And we have to tell them which projects we will now inspect and what documents we have in place.
Okay. Could you ever, excuse me, since this is about rain, excuse me, would you ever do this prior to a rainy season occurring? Is that when you do it? Or do you do it sometime in May when there's probably not going to be rain? Or, you know, when, when exactly does this checking occur?
Our typical process is right before the rainy seasons, we go out and we have a list of the projects and we walk, you know, we will go drive through on the site, and we walk through on the site to make sure that everything has been maintained or taken care of.
Other questions for staff, comments, or a motion? Commissioner Bouswa.
I'll just make a comment, hopefully to get things started. We gave the applicant pretty clear direction at our last meeting. We had six items that we asked them to address. To my mind, five out of the six have been pretty clearly addressed. The one that's in question, I think, is whether or not we're satisfied with the drainage issue. To me, that's what we need to decide, is whether or not. And we've heard expert testimony. We've heard the neighbors' account of things. So I think, to me, that's the crux of the issue. This tower element was not something we brought up at the last meeting. It was not something we discussed. However, I think there's been some new information before us, and that is the change in the height of the story poles. When you go out there, it looks different. That may change people's opinion. So in my mind, those are the two issues that really we need to address, because I think the other five issues, at least to this commissioner's satisfaction, have been handled exactly as we requested. So as for the drainage issue, I'm compelled by what I've heard from the engineers that, you know, this is an incomplete system as it is. This is always, I mean, since we've been discussing this for years, drainage, groundwater, surface, it's always been an issue on these sites. And it is a difficult and challenging issue. And so I don't diminish anyone's concerns or opinions on this. But I am compelled by what I've heard, that I think, once complete, once the whole package is in place, that the drainage will be a vast improvement over existing conditions. So those are just my thoughts on how we should move forward.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I agree with what was just said, which leaves us, however, with the problem of the tower. And it is true that the story poles were changed. The drawings were not changed, but the visual impact of going out looking in story poles is different. I'm certainly prepared to accept that that was an accident, but nevertheless, it did occur. So, but my question so much isn't related to the story poles. It's simply, is the tower too high? The roof, by and large, as far as heights are concerned, 23 feet is probably okay. So the question is, if you go to 26-something, I forgot what the inches were, but close to 27, I guess, is that too high, considering the size, that is to say, the width and the length of the tower? Would it change the bulk and mass of the building were that either removed or made smaller? Well, it really depends on your perspective of the building. And near as I can tell, if you look down from the house at Mrs. Lynette's property, apparently the removal of the tower isn't going to make any difference at all. I could see how she might feel. The building itself is too big. On the other hand, 23 feet is 23 feet. So I'm troubled by our trying to redesign the building by saying, either remove the tower or lower the tower. I assume, and I don't know, and we haven't asked the applicant, that it might be conceivable to drop the tower a little bit, whatever that means. I just don't know that we're going to get much for that, whether it's dropped a little bit or removed. Now, I also don't feel that it is my job to judge the architectural merit of that. I do think it is correct that Mr. Cannon had an opportunity to say, "Boy, that tower is terrible. Get rid of it." He didn't say that. And I think, but by not saying that, I think he, in essence, said the design is good, except the issues he did raise. So I think we're all touching this problem very lightly, and we're trying to talk ourselves into something. But I think John is correct, and I think he is. It looks to me like the only issue in my mind now is the tower itself. And if I can accept that the tower is not really the issue on bulk and mass, then I would have to say that the design of the building fits our guidelines and our requirements. So I throw that out because I'd be happy to be educated by somebody else.
Commissioner Talasfor.
I'm certainly not going to be educating anybody. But I didn't have, I mean, my feeling wasn't that, when I, well, the new information of the story poles today, and when I looked at it, was very telling to me. But I did stand in Stephanie Lynette's driveway, and I did look up at the side. And the tower, actually, that, the element with the netting there, really did, it jumped out at me as being very apparent, whereas before I hadn't really noticed it. So I'm thinking that, and because Mr. Jeans had on his plan to maybe a skylight, I'm thinking that it would be something that we could either have eliminated and still have a phenomenal-looking structure, or we could bring it down. And I, that's where I'm going with that. And otherwise, I agree with the drainage issue is our other big main issue. So I just had her firsthand experience in seeing it, and then hearing from the Martinez's about looking into it. It has impact, and I don't know how any trees are going to grow to disguise that. So, and, you know, so I, and also, our design guidelines say to avoid towers and turrets. So there you go. When I read that today, that's what I have to go by, are our design guidelines.
I just wanted to add to it. I am not ignoring the Martinez's comments, and I do think we can address the Martinez's comment with, if we were to approve this, with conditions. So I did not mean to suggest that I was ignoring those comments.
Mr. Smith.
Okay. Well, I'll jump in here. First, as to the design of the home, I actually like the design. And I think that it sets a nice transition and a good standard as we move down into what we assume could be a transitioning neighborhood. So I do not have a problem with the towers. And secondly, however, with the drainage issue, I do believe that it's going to be resolved. However, I am concerned that the pump is not working today. And we heard that the pump is not working, and we heard that someone pulled the plug on the pump to, in effect, reboot it. So I'm concerned only because the pump may not affect this particular plan before us, but it does seem to be an issue that continues to come up. So I'm wondering if we can somehow certify that the pump is in good working order. Is that possible?
I would defer that question to the applicant.
The question asked by Commissioner Smith, it seems to me, is capable of an easy answer by conditioning. If there were an approval, by saying, "As a condition of approval, before something happens, the applicant will provide a certification from the proper discipline."
Sure. Although, I would suggest that that particular pump is not part of this particular project. So while there might be a concern about its functioning, it's not really part of this project, so may not be something that would be taken into consideration. Because whether the pump is working or not is not a consideration, is not on this particular parcel. So I would-
I understand that. That was the question I had, actually, is that it doesn't pertain to the plan before us specifically. So.
I would ask the staff, it would seem to me that the question was properly posed by Commissioner Bouswa for us to answer, not suggesting that, not suggesting everyone would agree with his answer, that the judgment to be made tonight is whether the plans for, on this particular parcel and associated with this particular project, in the judgment of the commission, solve the drainage problem adequately. And the pump itself is not part of that solution.
The pump is not part of that solution. However, I think staff has heard enough in the past two hearings to take direction from the commission to ensure that that pump is operational and make sure that the maintenance agreement, when it is finalized, be annually reviewed as required by the state.
I have just been advised by the applicants that they have contractors on board contracting to maintain and review the pump.
Was the answer from the staff sufficient for the commission?
It answered my question.
I will make a motion, and I will invite any changes anybody wants. The motion would be to approve the architectural and site application by making the findings that no additional environmental review is required for the project as set forth in Exhibit 15. If the project is consistent with the residential design guidelines, also as specified in Exhibit 15, that is consistent with considerations for the review of architectural and site applications, and that we would approve the architect and site application S-12-039, subject to the conditions in Exhibits 16 and Development Plans, and also that the fence separating the Martinez property from this property be raised as, to such an extent as is permitted by law, with an applicable exception. Because I think there are facts here tonight that would justify such an exception. And I can't think of any other conditions we may have discussed, but that would be the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner, second, and by Commissioner Bouswa. Commissioner Seok.
To the maker of the motion and the secondor, one of the comments that was received by the neighbors is that there be a condition of approval, that completion of street improvements prior to any improvements and any, I guess, final occupancy. So the first question to staff is, is that a condition already in the project? And then the second to the maker and the secondor, would you be amenable to that condition?
Yes.
There's a separate agreement that the applicant has entered into for the public improvements relative to the subdivision. And I believe the council gave them an extension of time to complete that. I'd like engineering's input on that.
Yes, the extension is to the end of the year. However, they will be, they are currently working on it, and they will be finishing it before the house has been completed. With the typical construction process is that they will put the base down. They might put the first lift of AC, but they will not do the final lift of AC until everything is complete and done. Part, the reasons for that is to minimize the impact, the damage to the street, that which eventually we will own and we will maintain.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
My understanding, too, is the applicant offered to do that. I think you're telling me that's what is typically done. I don't know if that's a requirement. But since the applicant has already said they would do that, I suppose we could make that a condition. It would not vary from your normal practice. It would not require the finalization of things that could be damaged by construction itself. So I would be glad, if you would like me to, to add to my motion, the requirement that these improvements, as described, be put in before, I think it was before the building permit. Not sure I understood that.
They asked that it to be before the building permit, but then, like I mentioned, it's, the final lift should wait until after then.
Yes. That's what I do mean. So if that would satisfy your request, would the secondor agree?
Yes, I would agree.
Any other comments? For the sake of clarity, could we get the staff to attempt to tell us what the motion is in front of us?
So what we heard was it was a motion to approve with a condition to allow a fence up to eight feet in height, and to require street improvements to the first lift of asphalt to be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit.
That be consistent? Commissioner O'Donnell?
That is consistent. It just occurred to me, the other thing that Martinez has talked about were the trees. But it is my understanding that the landscape plans have been submitted as shown, and the trees are going to be put in. So I have not added that as a condition, because it already is. But what has been read back to me is satisfactory.
Any other comments? Commissioner Talasfor.
Yeah, I just, I will probably support the motion, but I do have to say, I've wrestled with this. And I'm, you know, it's, I see a real opposition here with the design guidelines as I read them today about avoiding towers and what we're doing. So at some point, maybe we all need to have a conversation about that over again. I mean, because I'd like to know how I'm supposed to weigh that, when it doesn't say may, shall, or can, but says avoid. So I'm struggling with that.
Other comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
Yes. Anyone that's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal the decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk department, and there is a fee for filing the appeal. The appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you very much. The second item on our agenda is a public hearing considering architectural and site application S-12-081, requesting approval to construct in addition to a single-family residence at 15975 Coral Vista Drive. May I have a show of hands from the commission, people who have visited the property? Are there any other disclosures that commissioners need to make with respect to this item? If not, Ms. Savage, may we have a report?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. The project is located in a hillside area and currently exceeds the maximum floor area allowed by the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. The applicant is asking for an addition of 230 square feet to further exceed the maximum floor area. The addition would be located on the first floor of the structure underneath an existing second-floor overhang. In addition, the location of the addition would be uphill, facing side. It would not be visible from the valley floor or any viewing platforms. Pursuant to the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines, the planning commission or the town council can approve a request to exceed the maximum floor area ratio under certain conditions. The applicant has submitted a letter regarding the- The applicant has submitted a letter regarding those conditions and have addressed those. If there, if the planning commission finds merit with the project, you would need to expand the considerations noted in your findings and considerations exhibit. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Are there questions at this time for staff? If not, we will open the public portion of the public hearing and invite the applicant to come forward, identify themselves, and you have up to five minutes to address the commission.
My name is Lucien Wensel, residing at 15975 Coral Vista Drive. And I wanted to just first to say that this is largely a cosmetic issue. That's what the house looks now. I don't know if you can see too well. There's this big overhang on top, and at the bottom, there's like triangles that are, that were designed years ago. Somebody probably thought it was very pretty. But it's, it's just not very attractive aesthetically. Oh, there's a better picture here. So the house is not very attractive, largely because of those, of those indentation here in shape of triangles. And we wanted to flatten out the, the front of the house, basically drop the top, top-floor wall down to the bottom to connect it. And while doing that, we would create extra space here in those, in those indentations that would be covered. So what we want to do is to, I have pictures here of... So this is a before and after. This is the present way the house looks. And this will be just one wall, a flat wall with bigger windows. Right now, there's little windows. It looks a little bit like a barn. So the whole thing will be just more attractive looking. This is what we intend to look like. But unfortunately, that means that we have to add this 230 feet if you add all those indentations here. And the planning commission, the review, have found out that we are fulfilling all the requirements, which is, we are not destroying any trees in the process, not impinging on environment. This whole facade is not visible from the valley floor. It's tucked in on the small local street called Coral Vista Drive. But there is a list, the, the one concern that was raised here was a list that specifies sizes of houses in the neighborhood. And on that list, it looks like our house, after addition of 230 feet, will be the biggest, will be bigger than the second biggest by about 70 feet. The next one is 5830. And I just feel that this list was done a little bit unfairly, because it includes houses that include, that indeed are either smaller than, than ours or, or the same size. But if you look at the street, Coral Vista Drive, we marked the house in question is 5678 feet. It's marked in green. The houses that have larger square footage right now are marked in yellow. There's three of them. And the houses that are smaller are marked, are not marked in yellow. And there's also three of them. So the Coral Vista house actually is placed right in between, between the three smaller houses and three bigger houses. So it fits right in the center of what the curve would be of sizes. If you look at the neighboring little street, Coral Vista Court, again, there's two, two lots that are larger than the green one. One is even 7200 feet, so it's much bigger. Another is 5818. And there's two that are, that are closer, but, but they are smaller, 5,033 and 4,700. So I just feel that this list, which includes also one house from another page, there is a house that was included, it's right here. It's several, oh, several, it's maybe two blocks away. Our house is here, and this house was included. It's indeed very small, it's 2138. And for some reason, it was placed here on that list. So when, when one cherry picks a little bit, you know, all the smaller houses, then obviously you can point that we are the biggest house. But we are not the biggest house. Before the change, it's actually smack in the middle. There's as many smaller houses as the number of larger houses. And then after adding the 230 feet, it will be larger by 70 feet than this house, and this house, and this house. It will be still smaller than the 7200 house, and this close to 7,000 house. So it certainly won't be the, the largest house. The intention here wasn't to, oh, my time is up. So basically, I, I told the whole story, that, that we are not going to be the biggest house in the neighborhood, and we really would like to do this change, because that's the only way to improve the facade, to make the house more appealing than it is right now, by filling in these gaps. We are not adding any rooms or anything here. So that's, that's my pitch here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. We do not have any requests from members of the public to speak on the topic, unless there's someone who hasn't identified themselves. So we would normally allow you another three minutes. If there's some other issues that you'd like to address the commission about, we would be happy to have you do that. But you don't need, you don't need to do that necessarily.
Do I have three, three more minutes? I don't want to bore you guys, because it's getting really late. And I think you are probably all very tired. But we have spent a year and a half designing, a design that would allow to correct the, the faulty design, what I would call. And we have here our project manager, I don't know what you can call him. And, and we think that we have a very elegant design that would just improve the aesthetics of the house. So would really appreciate if you helped us out and, and agreed to permit to go ahead.
Oh, I just want to say one thing.
Before you, could you just identify yourself, please?
Oh, my name is Rono Perizzo. I'm, I'm actually the applicant, and I'm project manager. So one of the things that we went through with our review was that we add some landscaping to the front to break up, so we don't just have one straight wall. So we actually, in our application, we have some landscaping that would kind of break up the facade as well. So anyways, I just wanted to add that.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
It's probably my fault, I can't find it. But one of the things I was concerned with, it's just the window sizes, and I was having some trouble seeing the proposed window changes that you were making for the second story. Because I agree with you, the windows for the second story presently are too, I think, too small. So you're going to make them bigger, but I'm just having trouble finding, drawing.
One of the things was that we wanted to have a casement windows, and in order to make them egress, because there are bedrooms up above, then we wanted to, so there's, these rooms up above are bedrooms. These rooms up above are bedrooms. So in order to kind of mirror the bottom and make them egress windows, we need to make them somewhat large.
Egress meaning for an emergency exit?
For emergency exit, yeah.
And I couldn't find the dimensions of those new windows. Where are, where are they shown?
Sure, it should be on the new plan that you have. I think they're three by five, if I'm correct.
And the ones below then, I just want to get the contrast. Three by five above, what are the ones below?
I think they're actually three by six foot eight.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Talasfor?
Could, I have a question about the windows, since we're on that. The two of the new design, the two end windows, is, is there a way to align the top window with the bottom window? It looks a little odd to me.
These windows here?
Is there a reason you didn't align them?
Answer that, there's a wall inside. There is a wall going right here, which would have, it's, I think it's a load-bearing wall. It would be very hard, very costly to move that wall. So that's why that window is kind of, just not aligned. I know, it would be a little bit aesthetically more pleasing, if they were aligned, true.
That was one question. Then I just had one other question. Had, you're the designer?
Yeah, well, we kind of work together.
All of you work together. Had, had you thought of any other alternative ideas for the down here beside? Because what's happened is that you're adding the square footage that is why you were brought here.
Yes, we realize that.
So was there, had you thought of another alternative to this?
We've, we've been thinking about this for almost two years, and, and it's really hard to come up with anything that would, that would remedy the problem here with this, with this panoply of, of windows going back and forth. So it was, it was just, any design would involve straightening this out.
So I, and I, and I totally sympathize with you.
Thank you.
Should have been handled in 1991, but anyway, getting back to the issue. So what I wanted to just ask you was, did you consider adding? I, I don't know what the rest of my commission feels about the 230 extra feet, but just from my knowledge, did you consider looking at perhaps adding a bay window, bay window treatments down there that do not go to the ground, so that you would get what you wanted as far as getting rid of the triangles, but not acquiring extra square footage?
I don't know if that...
And I don't know if it would work, I don't, just throwing it out there.
It may work, I mean, but structurally, if we kind of eliminate the cantilever, and we align the, you know, a wall straight under that, we kind of eliminate a lot of the structural problems. And so that's kind of why we lean towards that, if we had just cantilevered that. So part of the, part of the other reason is that, you know, if we bring this out, then there's a strong sheer wall that goes all the way from top to bottom. If we kind of just left the bay windows there, I mean, it would...
You could bring the bay windows all the way out to the, you know, to the structure. And is there a problem with the structure? Is that, I mean, you mentioned...
No, there's no problem right now. It just makes it stronger if we bring the sheer walls all the way out.
Thank you.
Mr. Birch?
It's kind of hard to tell from this front elevation. So I wondered if you could explain to me, when you bring the lower floor plate out to meet the second floor plate, what you're doing to break up the front mass? Are you doing a belly band across the center there?
We do have a belly band, and then we also have some additional planting, planting that we put across the front there.
What are you going to do for the belly band? Is it a different material, a different paint?
I think we were planning on doing stucco belly band, and probably a different color, but we're open to suggestions.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Following up on that question, I, I understand, I think, your problem, and I'm not opposed to your solution, but I'm not sure how it's going to look when it's all done, because you've got that sort of massive, reasonably unattractive wall when you're through with that. And the belly band you're talking about is the possibility of trying to break it up a little bit, although the description of what you want to do isn't helpful. I mean, obviously, the other thing you can do to get rid of those triangles is get rid of the triangles and leave the cantilever. That doesn't introduce your space, it loses space, which obviously you don't want to do. But I'm very troubled by the fact that if you have this solid wall of stucco with a simple belly band around it, you will solve one problem, but I'm not sure you're going to make your house more attractive. Have you thought about any way to, trees are nice, but that's not part of a design element. Have you thought of any way to make it more attractive?
Well, back to the, the issue of drawing the house back. So there's actually piers on the points of the end of each of those, of the triangles that, that support the structure. So we would have to, I guess, somehow pour new piers that would be drawn back. So the, the new plan actually uses the existing piers that are positioned out towards the front of the house. But I would have to ask Daniel about the design question, I guess.
Right, well, as far as design, we'll, we'll try to make it as, as nice as possible, but any design would require straightening this wall. And then we, we can have the belly band designed in such a fashion would come back, maybe, I don't know, to, to make it look attractive. But it's not a huge number of windows, it's not such a big house. It's, it's only two stories. I mean, it's ground floor store and, and first store. So it's not such a huge mass of, of wall here, it's just two stories.
You look at the photograph, and you look at the stucco, and now you decide you're going to have one solid wall of stucco.
But there'll be windows here.
I know.
And, and the band here in the center.
I'm hopeful that the band, you could do something with it, because that's going to be a lot of a straight stucco wall with, with windows. So I, I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, I understand. We, we are cutting also down on the number of windows, because there's, there was this mass of windows, so we're limiting it to six per side. So it'd be fewer windows, it will be a cleaner design.
Well, I don't know, but there was an offer of saying you will design a belly band and let somebody see it before you build it. And I'm not very sure. I, I defer to someone else that is more of a belly band expert. What can be done with that? You want to be a belly band expert?
I'm so not a belly band expert. But I, I think what we're saying is we would maybe like to see some further design. I, I don't know if you've thought about, I don't even know if you could actually do like an eyebrow with a, a, a little overhang roof between those to break up that mass, or, you know, or what Joanne's suggestion was, rather than push the whole wall out, take the two triangles, fill those in and create a bay window. I just wondered if you are open to bringing some potential other ideas so that we don't feel like now you've taken a not-so-fantastic design and just flattened it out? Because really, I mean, maybe you have a beautiful idea. It's just, these drawings, they're very hard to tell. Would you be willing to come back and show us a few other ideas? More detail?
But with, I don't quite, because, you know, it's, it's been a while that we have been working on this project, practically two, two years almost. And so you say not to straighten out those triangles, or?
I'm just saying that currently, at least the way it appears on that drawing, that now you've created one large front facade, a, a solid, flat surface. And it's hard to tell from this drawing what's going to break up that mass. So...
This band here, we can provide...
I understand what you're saying, but for us to, basically, yeah, see how that's going to do, we need a little more detail or to maybe look at other options for breaking up the mass. I, I think that would help us make a decision.
We can, we can certainly, you know, have some designs here, how to break this mass. We can furnish something like that. But the biggest problem, obviously, is the square footage, that, you know...
Well, that's, oh...
Mr. Talasfor?
That's why we were suggesting that you maybe could come up with alternatives to, to alleviate that issue of the extra square footage, because that's an issue. The staff couldn't, you know, pass it. So that's what we're suggesting that you do. Whether you do it, or you bring it to someone, for some extra ideas...
Well, we work with an architect, but, but believe me, we tried. I mean, it's, it's really hard to, to come up with something that would not, that would leave all those triangles here, not fill them out. We cannot move it back, because this is a support beam here in the points of those triangles. So the only thing was to bring it forward. I, I mean, we could maybe rebuild the garage and cut the 200 feet out of the garage, or...
I don't, I don't think we're necessarily saying that we would not approve it coming out. So this is not a, we want you to not add the square footage. We're not at that point. What we're saying is if you do, what I'm saying, is if you do add the square footage, could you try to break up the monolithic view of that front? So I'm not sitting here saying, oh, I'm really against your expanding or, or getting rid of this.
I understand.
You make it look better, that's all.
Okay, I'll try, we'll try to get somebody. I'm not a belly band designer either, but I'll find some specialists.
So Commissioner Seauk?
It's, I've only heard from a couple of our commissioners, but one of the things I'm hearing is that we're not opposed to the extra square footage. I do believe that you've provided... you've provided justification why you need it.
Thank you.
And it's not necessarily to add more rooms to your house, per se. One, one option is you can redesign it, provide a little bit more detail, bring it back to us so that it does provide some comfort. But because some of us are not experts on the aesthetics, one other option that I'm gonna throw out to commissioners is that we suggest he work with our consulting architect who might be able to provide some ideas on how to break up the, the wall of stucco that people are concerned about. So I throw that out to either, either option. I personally am quite comfortable deferring it to the consulting architect. So what I think I'll do is I'll make that motion, see if I get a second, and let's see how it goes. Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to move on. Sorry.
Are there other questions for the applicant at this time? If not, we would thank you and then turn to let the commission, Commissioner Seac and others continue the deliberations.
Thank you very much.
Before the motion is made, and this is just a question, and I guess I would direct it to staff. I don't know if it's in our purview to direct an applicant to use the town's architect to help them design their building. Sounds a little odd to me, but so I, I'm asking that question.
Can, before you respond to that, let me say formally that we will be closing the public portion of the public hearing. I would invite the staff to answer the question.
Directing the applicant to work with the architect is certainly an appropriate option, and we have done that in the past.
Through the chair, may I?
Commissioner Seac.
Okay. I move that application, let's see, where are we? Application, Architecture Site Application S-12-081, located at 159750 Vista Drive. I move that we approve the application, requesting the additional square footage that goes beyond the floor area ratio. The recommendation is based on the project being categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15301 of SEQA as contained in Exhibit 2. We've made the required considerations as required by Section 2920, 150 of the Town Code, also in Exhibit 2. And also, the required considerations has been reviewed from the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines for granting approval to exceed the maximum floor area. The applicant has provided his justification in the staff report as well, in, as during the public hearing, for the reasons for the exceedance. And as part of this motion for approval, we do ask that the applicant work with our consulting architect to provide recommendations on breaking up the facade of the front so that the concern of just one large wall plane of stucco be addressed, and that it be worked out and approved at the staff level.
Commissioner Tausford.
I will second that, because the merit to this is actually, and I appreciate it, is relooking at the aesthetics of this building and redesigning it and softening all of it and making it much more aesthetically pleasing to everybody. So thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
The only question I have is, we're, we're kicking the can down the road, which seems to be popular saying these days. We don't know what, we don't like it. We don't know exactly how to make it look better. So we're, we're solving the problem by saying the staff will make it look better. Now, that's fine, but I kind of would have liked to have looked at something and say, yeah, it looks better. And we're saying, no, we're not gonna do that. So, just a minute. If, I, I kind of had hoped that maybe what we were gonna do is continue the matter to allow them to bring back some new and improved plans. We've given certainly an indication that we're not resisting the increase in square footage. But if, if the majority would just like to say staff solve our problem, obviously, I'll be outvoted.
Commissioner Tausford.
The reason I looked like that is because I thought, I wasn't listening, I thought you did say we were gonna continue it. Okay. Would the maker of the motion, from the secondor of the motion, consider having the project come back so that we can review it, since we are having to include over far in this case?
I, I certainly understand the request. The reason why I deferred it to staff level is just because I'm quite comfortable with the far exceedance. And in terms of the aesthetics, I, I don't feel that I'm the expert that would necessarily approve the, the ultimate facade and elevation. I, so I'm gonna keep my motion as is. I understand if you withdraw your second and others continue it back to the planning commission, but I'll just keep my motion as is.
Chair's already ruled on our ability to withdraw our motions, right?
So I would say, are there other comments on the motion that is before the planning commission at this point in time? Commissioner Tausford.
Yeah, I would just like to come back with you with the fact that I've probably heard from at least one or two other commissioners that they did look at it with questions about the aesthetics. And so it would be important for them to come back and, and have a review of that. So, and because of the extra square footage, I do think that would be important. And I, you know, so I'm gonna, I will withdraw my second if that's not happening.
So let me, may I ask the, the secondor of the motion, did you second a motion which you misunderstood?
I would say that was correct.
So that seems to me to be reasonable. The chair will second the motion. Are there any other questions that the commission, or comments about the motion that's before us at the moment that was a motion made by Commissioner Seac, seconded by Commissioner Erickson? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So we have a five-two vote with Commissioners Tausford and O'Donnell opposed. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Folsom?
Yes, anyone that's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal it to the town council. The appeal must be filed within 10 days. The form for filing the appeals is in the clerk's office, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you very much. Before we move to item three on our agenda, we're gonna take
We're going to call, we would ask everyone to be seated, thank you. And call the So the next item on our agenda is a public hearing to take public comments on the draft environmental impact report for the proposed project that's located at 90 to 160 Albright Way and 14600 Winchester Drive. Would ask of the commissioners, are there any disclosures before we proceed with the public hearing? Mr. Birch?
I do, and I'm going to read it so I don't get tripped up. I wanted to disclose to staff and the commissioner and the public that I work for a commercial electrical construction contractor who does not generally do any work in Los Gatos. And while I do not have a conflict of interest or bias regarding this proposed project, it is possible that if such a project is later approved by the town council, my employer could submit a bid for some of the work. My compensation is not dependent or related to bids or work gain therefore, and therefore I will be participating in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bouchard?
On previous hearings on Albright Way, I had recused myself from the item because the firm I worked for at the time had prepared a riparian survey adjacent to the property. I've not worked for that firm for a couple of years now, so I will now be engaged in the Albright Way project.
Thank you. Any other disclosures from other commissioners? If not, let me provide some introductory comments about the public hearing tonight so that both, so clearly the commissioners are, have an understanding of what, how we're going to proceed, but so that members of the public will be clear about how we're proceeding with this particular public hearing. The California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as CEQA, requires the lead agency, in this case, the town of Los Gatos, to circulate a draft environmental impact report for a project of this type and this scope. This public hearing is being held during the 45-day public review period of the draft environmental impact report for the proposed project. The notice of availability for review of the report was released on January 29th, 2013, with a 45-day public review period running through March 14th, 2013. This public hearing is designed to provide an opportunity for members of the public to provide verbal comments on the completeness and adequacy of the report. Written comments on the report will be accepted by the town until the close of the public review period, which ends on March 14th, 2013. This public hearing is not intended for consideration of the proposed project, nor is it for the actual consideration of the draft environmental impact report. The planning commission cannot tonight consider acting on the merits of the proposed project until the final environmental impact report has been prepared. This public hearing is intended to allow the public an opportunity to provide verbal comments on the draft environmental impact report. Role of the commission tonight is to take those comments. No action, no discussion, or no response by the commission will occur during this hearing. Any public comments directly related to the issues studied in the draft environmental impact report that are raised at tonight's meeting will be addressed as appropriate in the final environmental impact report. Following the close of the 45-day public review period on March 14th, 2013, staff and the town's environmental consultant will prepare a final environmental impact report with responses to public comments received tonight and any written comments that are received during the review period as appropriate. A public hearing has not been scheduled for consideration of the proposed project and the final environmental impact report, but the staff anticipates that the planning commission will hold a public hearing on the proposed project likely in the month of April. At the time of that hearing, planning commissioners will have an opportunity to comment both on the project and the final environmental impact report. After the commission makes its recommendations on the proposed project, the matter will be scheduled for a public hearing by the town council. If you wish to address this tonight, we have a number of cards already, we would ask that you fill out a speaker card, all of this presented to the recording clerk. We are anxious to get your comments tonight. All the speakers will be given three minutes to make their comments. Any comments or other things that the commission would like to add at this, other commissioners would like to add at this moment? If not, we will open the public portion of the public hearing and call Eric Anderson first.
Planning Commission, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Having reviewed a great portion of this, I had just a few comments. The first is related to section on page, section two, page two, reference to 850 jobs generated. In section five, page four, the EIR switches and claims that there are 990 jobs generated by this. There's no definition. Unfortunately, this is accretive. Unfortunately, the EIR is still pretending as if, or this draft EIR is pretending as if the existing 250,000 square feet is occupied. It is not. Drive over there, maybe 25% of the park is occupied at this time, so it makes more sense to deduct those and come up with a real number about the jobs generated for this. One of the things that the EIR talks about is the applicant is looking for modern tenants and their demands. Let's talk about those demands. Tenants today do not occupy buildings the way they used to. They do not occupy them in four employees per 1,000 square feet, or as this 990 might deduce from the parking, 3.3 per thousand. You look at Google, who has the city of Mountain View tied up with their traffic, their parking here in Los Gatos and being shuttled over, they occupy at about five to six per thousand. Now, if we take an extrapolation on that of what that'll do, the traffic study, we now have to look at this site being occupied by 2,700, maybe 3,700 employees, not as is indicated here in the EIR. I'm not sure why the staff didn't pick this up when they read modern tenant demands. So the traffic study needs to be looked at. It was pointed out by the city of Campbell that we'd underestimated the jobs, but it was not addressed in this. Next, on page 2.1, the draft EIR states, "The project proposes a new PD." Then in section four, page, page two, it says, "The proposed PD overlay zone." And then in the preceding paragraph, it says, "The existing PD overlay." I'm confused. The PD overlay appears to be a convenient way to circumvent the rezoning of the property. If you read this, it says, "The proposed project would result in the replacement of existing office research and development buildings on the site with new office and research development buildings structures." And then on the following page, it says that, "The proposed PD overlay zone would ensure orderly planning and quality harmony in the neighborhood. The PD overlay is specially tailored development plan and ordinance that does the zoning regulations for the accompanying project. The PD overlay would establish development parameters such as maximum height, minimum height." So what's happening is by doing a PD, we're circumventing this zoning change that they need and is described.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Your time is up. Jeff Black?
Good evening, Commissioner. Jeff Black, 362 Bachman Avenue. I just wanted to offer my support to the Albright project, the EIR of which we have been reviewing this evening. The redevelopment of the Albright property will offer a significant economic benefit to our town by eliminating an underutilized and functionally obsolete project with a Class A office development that the town can be proud of. Adding a modernized employment center to our town's commercial base allows for the type of job creation that attracts world-class corporations to flourish in our community. Our community and our school districts in particular will benefit not only from the increased tax base from the project, but will also realize the indirect economic benefits of accommodating the housing and consumption needs of a highly skilled workforce. The development facilitates our community's general plan policies of providing a mix of office uses in the Vesona Light Rail area and takes advantage of the location close to mass transit. This is a policy that's been part of the goals of the town's general plan since the 1990s and was reaffirmed in the most recent update of the general plan. DIR has addressed the traffic issues that the town faces in the project area. Improvements to roadways and funding to the town's traffic improvement fund are provided to mitigate the impacts associated with this development. The traffic studies are based on professional standards and methodologies used to calculate traffic impacts. The town's studies were peer-reviewed and coordinated with local agencies to ensure accuracy, according to the EIR. Our community will only benefit from this development. It's consistent with our town policies and has been continuously studied in the EIR in the previous city applications the last year. The results are the same. The impacts are less than significant and the benefits are overwhelming. Our community needs high-end corporate office space and this is a perfect location to accommodate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Jack Van Nada, and then following him, Andy Wu.
Good evening. My name is Jack Van Nada. My three minutes is to address some of the hard and soft costs of the developments along Lark, including the Albright project. We are spending more and more time sitting in traffic. In 2010, according to Enrix, a company that Car and Driver calls a leading traffic information company, compiles a monthly and annual traffic congestion index. In the past year, the San Jose metropolitan area traffic congestion index has grown by 6%. Their last data published as to what this waiting time means to the average commuter was 37 additional hours in sitting, sitting in traffic. Additionally, it costs approximately 13 gallons of fuel wasted while idling, which in turn produces 333 kilograms of CO2. CO2 is the primary CJ, C8, excuse me, GHG responsible for climate change. The average congestion cost was $721 in 2010, and they were using the wage of $16 per hour, which is substantially below the average wage for many of the people living in Los Gatos. There is an indirect cost of frustration waiting in long lines to get through the stoplights or onto the freeway. Those not only build in the driver, but those pressures are often brought home to the family. We put our health record, we put our health second just to live here. We're willing to put up with a smog sitting at stoplights and then the big drive to work. Are we willing to sacrifice our town's values for short-term gains? The total impact on Lark Avenue with Albright, North 40, Oka Road, Capri, and Los Gatos Boulevard developments, to say nothing of the Los, excuse me, the San Jose Medical Unit that's on Los Gatos Boulevard, should be revenue and job-producing businesses. We estimate that they will also increase traffic by approximately 24,000 additional car trips per day. Shouldn't we develop the solution at the same time that we develop the problem? If we can't, we must mitigate the development to fit with that which works for us today. We cannot bank on mass transit now or in the future. What comes first, the mass transit solution, or do we continue to develop, leaving the solution for another day? Isn't that where we are now? We're in such a hurry to grow that we don't consider the consequences. Build today, pay for the problems tomorrow. And I hear my kids say time and again, that's how we've grown into the state in which we currently find ourselves. Borrow today, let them pay tomorrow. I cannot advocate the Albright project be allowed to grow to 550,000 square feet. That's too many people to support on a underdeveloped infrastructure that simply doesn't have any room to grow. You can use the term, is that it?
Please just finish up quickly.
Okay. You can use the term of mitigating traffic impacts, but that means nothing to the commuter who today sits through two red lights before getting their chance to go to the next stoplight. We need jobs, but we do not need them without first considering the costs and the consequences that come with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Nada. Andy Wu, and then Leslie Logan.
Commissioner Erickson, members of the planning commission. I haven't been here to agitate you all in quite some time, so I thought I'd make a showing. I'd like simply to address the chapter number five, other CEQA considerations in the draft environmental impact report. And I note that the report states three alternatives to the currently proposed project. One being no alternative, which is a no-project alternative. The second being a reduced intensity alternative. The third being a reduced height alternative. Now, had the draft environmental impact report proposed a project based upon the reduced intensity alternative in the first place, which is section 5.5.3, I would have had no problem with the proposal, and I probably wouldn't have come here other than to, to observe. However, what the developers are proposing to build is a monstrosity, and I'll tell you why I feel it's a monstrosity. Number one, consider what type of world-class businesses we'd like to attract to Los Gatos, and is Los Gatos really appropriate for perhaps a campus like a Google campus or an Apple campus? I wouldn't think so. We have our own distinct character as a town, as a community, and regardless of the economic benefit that we may gain by attracting a large corporate presence, that has to be weighed in conjunction with what type of lifestyle the residents of Los Gatos will have to face and live under. I know my time is running short, so let me just quickly skip to section 5.5.5, environmentally superior alternatives. I gather that when there are alternatives and the environmentally superior alternative is the no-project alternative, then the environmental impact report has to select one of the other alternatives that is actually a buildable alternative. And what the report states is that the secondary alternative would be the, the reduced intensity alternative. But strangely enough, the consideration here for why the project is not based upon the reduced intensity alternative is purely economics. I'll read the last sentence. "When the overall environmental impacts of each alternative are taken into consideration, the reduced intensity alternative would provide the greatest reduction in potentially significant environmental effects when compared to proposed project, and therefore would be the environmentally superior alternative. However, this alternative would not meet some of the project's objectives." Two of those, financial, the second being transportation, but there is no transportation. There is no public transportation currently going to that site. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. We've missed you. Leslie Logan, followed by Dale Miller.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Logan. I'm a longtime resident of Los Gatos, and both my husband and I have been active in this community for many years. Our children are the third generation in our family to attend Los Gatos schools, and the Logan family has been part of Los Gatos since 1932. Tonight, I speak with you not only on behalf of my family, but also on behalf of we support Los Gatos. We have supported this project along the way because of its exciting potential to be a great source of pride for our community, creating high-quality jobs and allowing world-class companies like Netflix to stay and grow, which generates significant direct and indirect economic benefits to our town. This draft EIR notes that this proposal is consistent with the longstanding Vesona Light Rail section of our general plan that says this is where we want to see intensification of land uses, and which was re-adopted when the general plan was updated. In fact, as I reviewed the section on alternatives, I noted with great interest that not developing this plan according to the project proposed would actually be in conflict with the goals of the town council, the general plan, and the sustainability plan. It is very clear that the draft EIR used professional methods to conclude that all of the impacts associated with this development can be mitigated to a less-than-significant level. This is the data that needs to be used for evaluation of this project, not personal perceptions, but standard, professional, peer-reviewed methodologies and conclusions. Yes, there will be more cars on the roadway, but the effects can be addressed, and the improvements planned as part of the project will have benefits to pedestrian safety, improve aesthetics, and even encourage eco-friendly practices. So now it is important to realize that all of the studies of the potential impacts of this project have concluded the same thing. There will be effects, but they can be mitigated to a less-than-significant level. Our community will benefit substantially from having a development that would allow job growth while producing a financial windfall for our schools. As an active parent who worked 12 years as a volunteer and staunch advocate for our schools and our children, and as a member of the steering committee for both past parcel taxes and bond measures, I understand the benefits of this particular project to both school districts without any of the negative impacts and costs associated with additional housing are not only significant, but in light of the projects coming our way, they are crucial. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Dale Miller, followed by Lee Cantano.
Dale Miller, 115 Newell Court. I live right at the intersection by, behind the Ochs Club at Lark and Winchester, so I can attest to traffic issues that exist significantly. But first, I want to thank the council for, you know, allowing input from the city, the members of the city, and coming back and modifying the original proposal back to where it's more reasonable. But the main issue I have is that we have three projects going on that are being treated separately. One is the AHAs, one is the North 40, and one is Albright. And they all impact traffic that are going to impact the 85 interchange, Winchester, Lark, and Los Gatos Boulevard, and we're looking at it as individual projects. I think we need to combine these projects from a traffic perspective. I don't think we've looked at the traffic infrastructure impacts. For the Albright project specifically, I counted approximately 2,000 parking spots. My suggestion would be we limit the parking spots to half of that, and My suggestion would be we limit the parking spots to half of that, and try to encourage people going in that they have buses like Google uses, or they have carpooling. They incent people to reduce the number of trips coming in to help reduce the traffic, because there's no improvements being made at 85. Another suggestion would be to get the Onwrap on 85 southbound put in place. Partition Winchester Boulevard, so people can come from the north and only enter into the Albright project or go south. And then traffic going north only can go right into Albright. Traffic coming out of the Albright process can only go right north on Winchester where it can actually handle some of the traffic, because right now, even coming tonight here on Lark and Winchester, I had to wait two lights at 10 minutes to seven to get on to take a left to go on University. Makes sense? Yeah, I'm trying to go left on, east on Lark, excuse me, to go to University. It took me two lights just to get there at 10 to seven tonight. So the traffic on Lark and Winchester is where we want to minimize. The other issue I have is parking in front of courtside on Winchester. Both sides are parked full. The overflow parking lots park full. I live on Newell Avenue, so the Courtside Club was leasing spots at the Elks Club, which now has lost its charter, but they're still parking the Elks Club. During the morning prime time, they park on Newell Avenue, and these are both the valet parkers and the Courtside employees and the Courtside members. So obviously Courtside is exceeding its CUP original case, because we were told when they put the parking lot in, they would never go any farther. So there are many issues on parking and traffic that I think this has to be addressed in a reasonable mode, and some things may be forced to make sure that the tenants of this complex are helping to minimize traffic going in and out of Los Gattis, and then try to force the traffic out so it doesn't go into Lark and Winchester, because Oka Road's a mess. Anything that touches Lark, Winchester, Los Gattis Boulevard will be impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Lee Cantano, followed by Ann Robinson.
I had hoped to be further along with the review of the draft EIR, but given the length of the document, its complexity, and its often difficult analysis to follow, I find myself not as far along as I would wish. Therefore, I'm still in the process of review, and these are my preliminary comments. My final comments will be submitted prior to the end of the review period and will be more specific. The following are the areas of my preliminary concerns. The project alternatives, the staff's conclusions, the project description, compliance with the general purposes and explicit policies of the secret to inform and disclose, discrepancies within the text and between the text, the appendices, and the PD and ANS plan sets, references to the VLR extension and station, traffic analysis, visual impacts, and also cumulative analysis. I will go through a couple of these as I can. I'm sure I won't finish in more detail. The alternative analysis, no analysis was made of an alternative that would meet most of the objectives of both the town and the applicant, as well as meeting the land use policies and the land use designation of the general plan. The project does not conform with the underlying general plan designation, and therefore should require a general plan amendment. Staff's conclusions that the intensification of use, including heights, are appropriate in the Vesona Light Rail area is not supported. The conclusions of the project's consistency with the town's small-town character appear to be based on this conclusion. The reasoning appears circular, and if this confuses you, it's confused me as well. The project description, while this project is definitely an improvement from the previous project, there are still problems with it. The definition of the project is not totally clear. The meaning of primary use, office-serving amenities, office-serving uses, and ancillary uses are not clear and distinguished between one another, and whether any of those include retail, and if so, whether those uses would be open to the public. The project descriptions and project data and background information and history is not adequate for the reader to follow the impact discussion that follows in chapter four. There appears to be subtle bias for the project in the first three chapters of the draft EIR due to the inclusion of statements that are more appropriate in chapter four, the impacts analysis, or in the statement of objectives in chapter two. I have more, but that will do it for now.
Thank you, Ms. Cantano. Look forward to receiving your written comments. Ann Robinson.
I've been a homeowner in the Charter Oaks community for 20 years. I've reviewed the site plan and the EIR for the proposed Albright development and have several concerns. My primary concern is the residents of Charter Oaks have no way to adequately evaluate the impact of the proposed buildings and parking structure without story poles installed on the east end of building number four, the southeast corner of building number three, where it borders the Charter Oaks community, and on the entire south end of the parking structure where it also borders the Charter Oaks community. I don't understand why the planning department has not required the developer to place the location of the story poles for the Albright Way development on the sides of the structure that border the Charter Oaks community, the closest and only adjacent residential community. Without story poles, we cannot fully understand how the project will affect our privacy and our vistas, including the occupants of the building's ability to look into our homes, patios, and property. I don't know how to evaluate the lighting that will emanate from the buildings at night. On February 12th, I sent emails to both Laura Worthington Forbes and John Schenk requesting story poles at the east end of the building number four, where it borders Charter Oaks. I sent an email to Joel Paulson on February 15th, asking if the planning department could require the developer to put up story poles if the developer denied my request, and what were the policies and procedures to require the applicant to do so. Joel replied, saying to let him know when the applicant responds to our request for story poles. I then met with Laura Worthington Forbes at the Charter Oaks complex on Monday, February 18th, and walked the property and made the request for story poles. I made the request to the applicant again on February 25th, in person, when John Schenk and I met and walked the proposed development. I have indicated on this exhibit the locations where the story poles will be most visible to the Charter Oaks community. May I give you a copy of that? To date, I have no answer from the senior planner and no answer from the applicant. I would like to know what the town's policies and procedures are to require the developer to locate the story poles as requested by the residents of the Charter Oaks community, and when will I have an answer to my request? I have started a Charter Oaks petition for the installation of story poles, as I have described, for the benefit of the Charter Oaks residents. Currently, we have 48 signatures, and we will continue to obtain signatures. Here is a current copy of the petition. "My 47 neighbors and I, residents of Charter Oaks, respectfully request the Planning Commission to require the proposed developer to install story poles consistent with the exhibit I've provided you." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
And here's the...
I can give that to the staff also. Bob Shepherd. While Mr. Shepherd's coming up, we do not have any additional cards, so he would be the last speaker unless there are people who have not turned in a speaker card yet.
So it sounds like I'm the only thing standing between you and the door? Is that okay? My name's Bob Shepherd, and the majority of my work in commercial real estate is done in Los Gattis and West San Jose. I'm a member of Courtside Club across the street from the Albright project. I drive down Winchester and Lark Avenue every single day. But before I get to my comments, I do want to thank you, the Planning Commission members, for all that you do for the benefit of the community, so thank you. I am in complete support of the Albright project, and I want to see it move forward, and I want to see it move forward as quickly as possible. I've read the reports and looked through the project, and it doesn't have any negative impact to the neighborhood. Yes, there'll be more cars, but that will be mitigated. If the project gets derailed, and Netflix isn't able to do what they want to do there and move on to that campus, there's 31 million square feet of available office and R&amp;D space in Silicon Valley that they can move to. So there is a good alternative for them if this project doesn't go forward. This project does create jobs, short-term and long-term, and jobs now, it's different today than it was in the past generation, because the previous generation looked at jobs as an activity, as something to go to. But what people look at jobs now, today, they look at it as now a lifestyle, a lifestyle, and that's why companies like Netflix and Netflix themselves want to be in Los Gattis. So I fully support this project, and I hope you can push it through as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Larry Arzey.
You know, I never have anything nice to say, so if you'd rather have me sit down, I'll just tell you what a good job you've done. Thank you.
We're anxious to hear your comments.
You know, this is a very important historical time in determining what Los Gattis will look like in the future. Any variance is granted for this development will mimic at the North Forty. You will get little to no help determining the correctness of this PD from staff. I think the lesson of our movie house should be foremost in your minds. Staff told you it met the parking district requirements, when in fact, they knowingly misled you to approve that project. Please do not believe a word they tell you. They got us into a lawsuit on this project already, and I do not believe they have learned their lesson yet. There are still questions of circulation, traffic, building heights, air quality, of which none should be sacrificed for property tax revenue. Light rail is a fantasy and cannot be used as a means or a reason for high density. So think for yourselves, trust your judgment, and grant approval only if it meets the integrity of our general plan. I believe it does not. I believe it can, and will only require more housing and more school needs.
Thank you, Mr. Arzey. We ask one more time, is anyone else from the public who would like to address the commission tonight? If not, we'll close the public portion of the public hearing. And I would say to fellow commissioners, thank you for your patience taking the comments, reminding everyone that we will have a chance to comment when the final ERI comes to us and the project does, but are there any comments that individual commissioners want to make at this time? Commissioner Talasfor.
Yeah, I don't have a comment, but I have a question of staff as we move forward with this. May I ask through the chair? Curious, when we reviewed the Netflix building that's presently there, we were actually escorted onto the ground, and we had tours of the ground, so I wanted to know, one, if that would be happening? If we would be supplied with a scale model, in this case, because of the nature of the number of buildings and height, and the sensitivity to where, and because of where it's located? So those are my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Talasfor. Any other questions for staff or comments from the commission? If not, we'd like to once again thank the members of the public for their comments tonight, and remind the members of the public who are here in attendance and those who may be watching that the public review period goes through March 14th, 2013. We, the Town Council, and the members of the staff welcome written comments through that end of that period. So we have a report from the Director of Community Development.
Very brief, just going to reiterate, the environmental documents that are out currently, obviously, the Albright draft EIR is currently out. The notice of preparation has been distributed for the North Forty project, and there will be a scoping meeting held on March 6th, next Wednesday, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And there's also a notice of preparation for the Hillbrook School EIR that has also been released, and those comments must be received by March 14th. And with that, that concludes Director's report.
Any questions for the staff from the commission? Commissioner Sayat.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Paulson. So March 6th, where's the meeting?
In the council chambers.
And then what is happening on March 14th?
March 14th is the end of the comment period for the Hillbrook School notice of preparation.
Okay.
Also coincides with the closing of the 45-day comments for the Albright EIR as well.
Okay. Just a clarification, during the state of the, our mayor mentioned that there is a Hillbrook meeting, but that's separate from this notice of preparation that you just mentioned that's on the 14th, correct?
Correct.
Other commission matters from members of the commission? If not, we're adjourned. If not, we're adjourned.